Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, July 17th, meeting of the Albion City Council. I'd ask that if you have a cellphone that you turn it on silent. I call this meeting to order and we'll begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. A pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask Clerk Domingo to call the roll.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. We'll begin with council comments. Are there any comments from the council this evening? Councilmember French.
I just want to respond to a comment made to me by a citizen who's concerned about the email access on the website, which I think we've taken care of. So if you go to the cityofalbianmi.gov and click on City Council, you can access emails for all seven of us on the council, including our mayor. If that link does not work, it's best to just copy that email address into your email browser to make that connection. But I think our technology guy fixed it this afternoon. So you should have no difficulty, I think, now connecting to us by email if you have any email questions about anything. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from councils, comments from council this evening? Okay, seeing that out, what I will say is I know at the work session, Councilmember Spicer made a request regarding increasing, or a request to ask for more funding regarding the contributions that were announced for the connector. So I mean, if it's possible, have we talked with them yet?
I've spoken with them. There was, I know one has indicated they could not go higher.
Okay.
Need to confirm.
Okay. Yeah, so if we could just get, I guess, an official word on that, I think that'd be helpful. Because I know, you're right, you know, if you don't ask, you don't get an answer. But other than that, I have no comments. I don't see there any, I see that there are no further council comments. We'll move forward to public hearing. The item A under public hearings is Request Approval Resolution Number 2017-32 for the Michigan Community Development Block Grant Funding for the Peabody Block Project. And I'm gonna open the public hearing. If there are any citizen comments relative to this project, I'd ask you to come forward at this time, state your name and address.
Amy Dupreys. I'm representing the Albion Economic Development Corporation at 309 North Superior Street, Albion. Do you want my home address, too? Okay. I'm just gonna kind of recap the project quick. But the, why I wanted to talk to you is to support the project and kind of go through what it means to our community. So recap is, this is the Peabody Project that we've heard for quite some time now. It's at 400 South Superior. It's a three-story mixed-use project with approximately 3,000 square feet of commercial space on the first floor. And then there'll be two-bedroom, two-bath apartments on each of the upper two floors. So a total of four apartments. It's the, it's a, the project includes a complete gut rehabilitation, which means it goes down to the windows, the walls, the floors, the electrical, mechanical, everything. It'll also include an elevator put into it. The commercial space will be white boxed. White box just means it gets ready for whoever might come in the retail world. So there might be some customization that has to happen after that, but it gets it ready so that that person can see it easily. And additionally, it's being done to historic standards. So the request before you is to support a CDBG, a Community Development Block Grant Fund, grant request for $828,000 for elimination of blight. The building was classified as blight, so it thus qualifies for the CDBG funds. Part of these projects, and often these kinds of projects don't get done without state or federal money being involved in them because the return just isn't there in a timely manner. So for this project, the federal fund that goes through the state, the CDBG, is being requested. And part of the requirements for that is local support. So the local municipality needs to support the project and be a part of the project going forward. And so for this one, it's a, it's a DDA sharing agreement. Typically, what you would see in these types of projects is a tax abatement. Could be a 50%, could be 100%, depending on the community and depending on the project. Or a commercial rehabilitation exemption, which basically with that freezes the taxable value at whatever it was to start with. So the ending taxable value, the increment in that is not taxed for a period of time. So there's no benefit to the city other than what they were getting to begin with. For this project, it was important to the developers and the owners to make sure that there was a benefit to the community as well as to helping them make the return on investment and also meet the requirement that the state imposes on them of having local support. So a tax-sharing agreement was, was supported through the DDA. And I can kind of give you a brief outline of what that's gonna look like. It won't be finalized until the actual project is done. Once the project is done and they know what the taxable value is gonna be and what the actual costs were, then they'll come up with that agreement and they'll tell you exactly what it's gonna be. And it'll be written down. But for, it's planned to be about six to eight years. And the early part of it, every two years, the percentages were expected to change. But the early part, more percentage will go to the owners and less to the DDA. And then as time progresses, more to the DDA and less to the owners. So it's estimated to be the first two years an 80-20 split, meaning 80 going to the developers and 20 going to the DDA. So that's on the increment, and that's the important part to remember. And then the next two years will be a 60-40. Following that's a 40-60, and then a 20-80. So once the project is completely done, they'll define exactly what those costs are, what that increment is gonna be, and they'll put that in an agreement and everyone will sign and agree to it. So that's all I really wanted to kind of outline with that. The Economic Development Corporation and my board is very supportive of this project. It's going to spearhead some of the other projects in the, in the area. And if there's one thing I can say from many years of being at the state is the state looks for projects that are, that we're making a statement in. So they've already put money into the Albion Hotel. The Peabody will follow. The other projects, they want to make sure the community is gonna be successful. So they're gonna continue to support projects in Albion. So I would see in the next 18 months to 24 months, us coming forward with many, many more projects that would be in line with this. That's my hope, at least. Is there any questions for me?
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. The percentage split you went through, you said two-year increments. Set two-year for every level for a total? Are we talking an eight-year span or how long?
It's about six to eight years. We won't know until we get the end. But yeah, it's anticipated that it would change every two years.
Thank you.
But that will be detailed out.
Any other question? So, oh, I do have one question. Because I remember very early on when the project was, was presented, in terms of the actual, I guess, construction staff, is that something? Is there, is there a goal to shoot for local builders? Or is there, has there been any kind of discussion or thought, thinking about that recently?
You know, I can't speak on behalf of the developers, but I know that that was talked about early on and that was part of their plan to seek local participation when possible. And I believe I saw that in the bid package for the contractor. But I can't, don't quote me on that.
Are there any other, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other further public comments for the public hearing? Okay. Seeing that, I'm gonna close, close the public hearing and ask for a motion on this item. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and supported, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a real call vote.
Councilmember Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Presentations. Item A under presentation, under presentations, the annual report from the Albion Housing Commission.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ann Kemp. I am the Executive Director of the Albion Housing Commission, 1300 Cooper Street here in Albion. This is our annual report. As you all know, the Housing Commission is comprised of 220 units. Currently, we are at 98% occupied with eight vacancies. Recently, well, I should say, March 15, 2016, the Housing Commission has gone smoke-free. HUD actually established a final rule February 3, 2017. So we were a little bit ahead of the game before HUD actually sent the final rule down. We did have to amend our policy this, in April, to compromise with the HUD because we did have 15 feet away from the, the actual buildings where HUD has indicated 25 feet. So that was amended in April. The Housing Commission has received its 2017 capital fund. With those monies, we will re-osfold our parking lots, that's in all four of our sites, with striping, cleaning, and resurfacing. We will also start on replacing our windows and our doors in Northview Homes. This will take a total of approximately four capital funds to complete the project. Also, we just refinished our roof replacement in Grandview Heights. This project closed out in October 2016, where we used 2016 capital fund monies to complete that project. Also, that was completed with that project was carpeting in our administrative office, architect fees for the roofing, and of course, operating. There was $90,000 put into that fund for operations. And that pretty much concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions from council? Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Kemp, the parking lots and the doors and windows that you referenced, when will, when will that project begin?
We just received the, the funding issue that had came down from HUD approximately three weeks ago. So our deadline to get the paperwork into the HUD office is August 2. So after it, the paperwork has been completed by the HUD office, then we should start going out for bids, I would say maybe October. October, November. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Two, two? If there are, no, no, I have two kind of questions. So one, well, question comment is, I'm sure you know, like, Dalrymple is being demolished. That's a positive thing. Do you know if, I, I, I want to say that the land bank staff went out and did some door knocking, but you know, if there's, if there's some way to kind of communicate to the residents that that's happening. I'm there to see it. And then as we, you know, once it's down, there's certain things that have to take place there. So I'm sure the city's gonna be following up with you so we can kind of communicate to people about, you know?
The hazard.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's one. And then the other, this is just a question because someone in the community asked me, we were talking about it in terms of some of the older homes. And then that led to another, another question. But in terms of HUD requirements, so I know a lot of times, or right now, they're talking a lot about, you know, lead in older buildings and, you know, that they're way, you know, old. Are there, does HUD like require, as part of any kind of inspections, do they check those kinds of things? That part, one of them.
Yes.
Okay.
We are completely lead-free.
Okay.
Yes, and we have to present a certificate every year.
Okay. Okay. So that was, those were my short two. Councilmember Reed.
I was just wondering, because it was being asked by a lot of people in the city and all over the city, as to what you would like to see on the Dalrymple land after it's demolished and all cleaned up. Is there any certain thing that would be useful for the people in your area?
Well, Councilmember Barnes and I and the board has, we're kicked around playground areas, but with Hotlern Park right down the street, I'm really not sure. Haven't given that any thought. I was on vacation last week, so I don't know, I didn't know that the land bank, that was, you know, coming up. So until I got back in the office this morning, I didn't, I wasn't aware that it was being demolished. So I haven't given it much thought.
Hotlern Park is kind of close to that.
Yes, very close. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Are there any other questions this evening? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Public comments. Persons addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. They ask you to observe proper decorum. Are there any public comments this evening on agenda items?
I just want to take a minute and thank Bill Dobbins.
Yeah.
15901 East Michigan Avenue, Albion, Michigan.
Thank you.
Thank Cheryl and Amy for their leadership in putting together, assisting us and put together the Peabody Project. And City Council for their continued support of this project. We believe that it will be a changer for that area and for the downtown as, as, as we go through this. And I realize there's a lot of emotions about things that are going on downtown, and I'm sensitive to those. And, and, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate the council being supportive all the way along. Hopefully, we've done a good job keeping you informed and will continue to be keeping you informed as we, as we embark on this. We hope that sometime in September, we can start demolition and construction. And again, just thank you very much, Mayor, Council, Cheryl, Amy, for, for all your support and all your help. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will move forward to the consent account, consent calendar. Item A, approval of regular session minutes for the July 5, 2017 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items for individual discussion. Item A, a discussion update on the status of the Rural Health Network Grant.
Well, Mayor and Council, we had received a request, I believe, of the Mayor relative to an update on the Rural Health Network Grant application that was intended to provide health services in Albion. And as of right now, the, I believe the email communication from Elizabeth Perry was included in your packet, but there is no additional information at the present time.
Are there any other questions from council? Councilmember French.
You all heard last week that Governor Snyder has approved the budget for the coming year. And that budget has a line item of $850,000 to investigate the process of bringing healthcare to Albion.
Are there any other questions of council on that? Okay, appreciate you checking that. Next on the agenda, item B, approval of council member selections for the EDC Advisory Board. So basically, as part of either remaining eligible or in compliance with the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, there has to be an economic development, I guess, plan. And part of that is basically led by a committee that has various stakeholders from the community, from various city, city boards and institutions. So council was asked to have representation on the board or on the committee. And I think that everybody, practically everyone on council, was interested in that. And so, you know, a decision still had to be made. So what I'm gonna do is just recommend that Councilmember Spicer be appointed because I know that everyone else on council has either been on another city board or another commission. And I think that Councilmember Spicer is the only one who hasn't had that opportunity. So I wanted to extend that. And that doesn't mean that we're not gonna have a chance to weigh in and give opinions and participate in that, that process. So that, that, that's my recommendation. And this is just for, and Amy's here. This is just for the, I mean, I know the initial meeting's on the 24th.
24. We're hoping that we don't have too many meetings.
Okay.
But there will be an opportunity for council to, I'm gonna be sending out a free kind of information packet, which will outline that brainstorming session. So council will understand what we are going to be brainstorming and maybe can give some support to you for that, for that evening, for that afternoon. And then they'll be in support by and by.
Okay. So can I have a motion to support that appointment? So moved. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Barnes.
First of all, I would like to ask through the chairman to the lawyer, what does the charter state in terms of the selection of boards and committees? There is specific on certain boards that recommendations are made from the public who turn their applications in to the mayor, and the mayor makes recommendations to the council. The council either approves it or denies it, such as the housing. The mayor would have autonomous power to appoint. This is a new one, and it, right now, I'm seeing the word Advisory Board and I'm seeing Committee here. My position right now is, this is a city-manager type government and that the chairman does not have blanket power to make the nomination here per the charter. And I would like the lawyer to let me know through a legal opinion, does he have the right to do that at this time? Based on the charter.
I don't think our charter actually contains appointment language regarding the EDC Board itself. I think that's actually separately contained in one of the state public acts. And I'm looking specifically at Public Act 338 of 1974, which is MCL 125.1604, subsection 3, that states the chief executive officer of a municipality with the advice and consent of the governing body shall appoint the members of the board of directors to the EDC. So basically, the, I read that to mean the mayor puts up somebody's name as a nomination and the council has to approve it. As much as the statute says.
Okay, well, the chief executive officer will be the city manager in a city-manager type government. In a mayor-type government, the mayor would be able to do that. This is a city manager. And I just want to put that out there. I don't mind if he's on there or she's on there. But I've seen several times that this council has allowed this chairman to act autonomous as a mayor-type government, which it is not. I also have some other concerns. Now, the mayor of this city has an automatic seat on the EDC. We get quarterly reports from the EDC.
Just, just a point of order, we're, this is not an EDC appointment. This is an appointment to, it, it would be similar to if we had a citizens advisory committee or something. So basically, it, it's not an appointment to EDC Board. And I think there is a point, there is a place in the charter.
Are we talking about an appointment to a committee?
Basically, we're talking to a.
I'm talking about an appointment to the EDC.
Yeah, yeah, so, so it's, it's not an EDC appointment. It's just basically an ad hoc committee that's been established. And so actually, what I did was to actually be, to be fair and open, I, you know, talked with the city manager and clerk about it and came to determination it'd be best to have the council actually discuss it and to do it in public. So, so.
Okay, so.
Go ahead.
So in that case, section 5.7, the council in its discretion by ordinance can create or abolish citizen advisory boards and grant them the power to conduct hearings, make recommendations to the guidance of the council. Unless the council shall otherwise determine by majority of all, all questions presented to the council containing any subject which has been delegated to the citizen advisory board shall be submitted first to the board for consideration. So it sounds to me, based on that, that we would have to, if we're gonna create an advisory board, we would have to do so by ordinance.
Oh, the.
Mayor, if I could offer a clarification?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Amy Dupreys, as the president of the Albion EDC and their board are creating the advisory committee, which they have invited participants representing various boards and commissions, businesses in the community. A similar invitation was extended to the City Council. Staff sent out an email soliciting who might be interested in serving. And we are fortunate to have seven very interested mayor and council members. So everyone indicated they were interested. So a selection process needed to be in place. And the one that seemed to make the most practical sense is what you do in similar situations when you're appointing to boards and commissions. And that's, you get a recommendation from the mayor and then there's a, the advice and consent from the council. So it's trying to apply a similar process.
Councilmember Barnes.
Thank you. You called a point of order on me concerning the word EDC. This is EDC Advisory Board. And I know it's a, it's a subcommittee of the EDC. I was wanting to make sure that we stay within the bounds of the city-manager type government. And you've just stated a recommendation based on an opinion. I have no problems with any of that. I just want this chairman to follow the rules of the charter and stop acting outside of the bounds. Because as. Can I finish, please? Why are you constantly interrupting?
Well, because.
Point of order. Say point of order. Something, you keep interrupting me.
Point of, point of.
Stop me.
Point of order.
I don't know what you're trying to do.
Point of order.
Okay, point of order.
The point of order is you're, you're concerned about appointment. It has nothing to do with the discouraging marks about me or any other of the council members. So I think we should just keep it to.
Disturging.
Keep, keep, keep it to a concern about anything that is prohibited from the council doing by a regular motion, which we do for every other board in the city. So is there a particular thing you can point to that, that through this vote, we're, we're gonna violate?
Yes, you're not following the charter. The charter doesn't allow for you to make the decisions yourself. I or any other council person could have made suggestions and sent them to you or the city manager saying, we would think that these people would be fit. But when you put it on a, can I finish? Hey, you go again. This is the problem.
Well.
The council tried to quash me from speaking because you and your cronies in the coalition and clique don't wanna hear me.
Councilmember Barnes.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order. Yes, point of order.
The city manager has just explained that this is not, we're not being asked to ask the public for applications. The council was asked to participate. And because of that, there's only seven of us on council. So it's, there's really no need to go out for applications among the seven council members. Everyone was asked if they wanted to participate. Everyone signaled that they were interested, and so a decision had to be made. So I don't hear any objection from the attorney. We, we make these appointments to all the boards, mayor recommendations, and council approval. And so unless there's something different, unless there's something that you can point out beyond any kind of personal things, I, I think that we need to move forward. And I would ask for a calling of a question if there's a motion to do that.
So right now, because you made these two.
Point of order. Point of order.
Well, I'm out of order then.
One second.
This is a cronyism I'm talking. This is a cronyism I'm talking about, you're trying to quash me.
Point of order.
You gonna make selections, you're not talking about the public.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Councilmember Barnes.
You didn't ask the council to do it, you did it on your own.
Point of order.
Councilmember Brown.
Point of order. Mayor, I'd like to move that we call the question.
There's a motion.
Oh, my God.
I'm sorry, yeah. There's a motion.
I would second that.
Moved in second, this is to suspend debate and move to the vote. Ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. We will proceed now with a vote for the appointment of Jeanette Spicer to serve on the EDC advisory committee for the purpose of meeting the requirements of the redevelopment ready communities program. There was a motion in the second, so we initially, so just ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. We'll move on to item C, a discussion of the water tower replacement. City manager.
Mayor and council, if you recall, a couple of meetings ago, Mickey Bitner, the city engineer, provided you with a presentation relative to the USDA grant application that is being compiled for the new, for a water tower upgrade or addition, and the upgrade to the water system. What you had presented before you were two options. The first one, to repair the existing and add a $500,000 gallon tank for approximately $2.5 million. And if you recall, the state, the federal studies had indicated that we needed to increase our capacity from our existing 500,000 gallons to an additional 500,000 gallons to meet the daily usage of water. The second option was to replace with a 1 million gallon tank, and that costs approximately $2.8 million. Or to repair the existing and add a 1 million gallon tank, which is approximately $3.3 million. The advantage to adding the 1 million would be that we would have additional capacity and would also make it more attractive in trying to bring in more businesses, especially those that are factory types, that would be large consumers of water. And so what we need from you today, hopefully, is some guidance relative to what is the preference, so that Mickey Bitner can move forward with drafting the document based on the scenario that is preferred.
Uh, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have the figures of how much the upkeep of each one is?
Yes, that's included in your packet, the one with the pictures. And then that's, the first section is the cost of the, either the upgrade or the installation of the tank. And then that second, I guess you'll call it section, is for the long-term maintenance between 15 and 45 years for each structure.
Thank you.
The one, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember French, Spicer, and Brown, council members.
Thank you. I think that the third suggestion is a suggestion I asked about at the last time we had the meeting. And we talked about, I talked about the possibility of sort of planning for a future. And I'll give credit to Mr. Bill Dobbins, who challenged us when we were talking about expanding water capacity in the downtown and not thinking ahead, not planning for a more successful future of the city of Albion. And I think that if we can make the case for the 1.5 million gallons of water storage, that that gives us an opportunity to vision about what could be coming to Albion with that extra capacity, instead of being reactionary to a factory or some other entity coming in that uses a lot of water and us having to build or having to say no to an opportunity because we don't have the capacity now. Now, you counter that with the conversation that we all thought about back in the day when this original Toro Ellipse was built. We had foundries in place that were consuming lots of water. So I think we need to continue to realize that the capacity requirements as demanded by the state have changed between 1969, when that water tower was first built, and 2015. So even though we have fewer factories now, therefore less water usage now than we did in 1969. The fact is, is that the new requirements for fire protection have increased the demands for water and storage at all times. And so I would just say that if we can make the case for $3.32 million for the 1 million gallon tank, that positions us and this community for the future for expansion that we all know and want to happen.
Thank you. Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. I can totally agree with what Councilman French just stated. However, I do want to make sure that we are also, Wendy, planning a process in which we will inform the community of any anticipated or expected costs that they will incur as a result of this, and to do that as quickly as possible.
Well said.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo with Councilmember Spicer, my question, I know there's a grant possibly associated with this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the match for that, what was the, do you know right offhand what the percentage was?
I don't recall the exact percentages. Based on the USDA formula for funding, the first portion of the costs are through a loan. And then once you hit a certain point, the next portion is covered by the grant.
So Mickey Bitner, the city engineer, after that work session, I had a conversation after, and he actually, we actually went through, and I don't have it right now, I'm lonely, but he gave me the particular, it was almost like a algebra equation about how, you know, what the different components are and what could come out of it. And I think that on this, I'm pretty much agreeing with Councilmember French, is that what he was saying is that you're gonna have, you know, the rates are gonna have to be at what, you know, the USDA feels is the appropriate rate based on the median income for our community. And so, you know, at a certain point, like you said, once you meet that threshold, it, you know, the amount of, I guess, grant award will go up the more you spend. So it's, it really wouldn't make sense to, you know, have to adjust, potentially adjust the water rates and then not have what we would need basically to suit us for decades to come. So it, you know, it would make sense really to, if you're gonna do it, go out. And I think one of the other things that Councilmember French had mentioned is in the, I guess, the water fund, like it was, there's about, it was over 500, right? About a million or something. And maybe just if we took, I don't know, 500 from that, repaired what we had right now, and then built a new one, you know, that might be a strategy. But I think if we do it, we might as well go all out and do it. I think the other question that was gonna be what, I can't remember which one, who said it, but basically making sure that we have a really frank conversation with residents to see, you know, what their concerns are and if there's anything else the city can do to, you know, handle, you know, particular cases. Because we don't want anyone to, you know, lose property over water bills. So I, and then the other thing I repeat is, this is just basically instruction for him to prepare the application. We won't have to make any property changes until it's actually awarded, or at least we know, yeah.
And I do want to mention, in addition to using a listing funds for a portion of the project, there was a possible funding available through the state. I haven't received confirmation of that. So we'll work out those scenarios when we have all of that information in hand. And in terms of calculating what then would be, if any, these water rate increase would be reflected. But what we need today is an indication from you on the scenario so that we can move forward with doing those calculations.
The other thing I remember from that meeting is that, I guess, as it stands right now, the city is not in compliance with the, I guess, I don't know, the volume of water, the capacity that we're supposed to have on hand. I think we have, the Blue Tower has, what, 500,000, and we're supposed to have a million. So that's something else to consider. So, I mean, my initial feeling is to do, if we had to, you know, pick one, one of the three options would be to repair what we have and then put the a million out there. You know, at least if we had to choose. I know this is not a vote, but is there any, are there any objections or concerns about that? Or, Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you. No objections or concern, Mayor. Just a comment or a statement that this is, the water tower project is something that we have to do. It's not something that we cannot act on. So we have to do something, and we wanna do something that makes the most economical sense at this point in time and benefit our residents the best, so. And incur, and have them incur as little cost as possible, so. I think we should make it.
Okay. Okay, so I'm not saying any objection to...
Just for clarification, the consensus of council is to move forward with preparation of the grant application based on the upgrade of the existing tank and the addition of a 1 million dollar, 1 million gallon. Another gallon.
Okay, okay.
Do you need a motion or not? Or we're just okay?
Yeah, we're okay. Thank you. Councilmember Barnes.
Have we decided outside of the grant, is there a match or where we provide this money from?
I, the city has, as one of our number, a number of the funds that we do have, I think there's a water fund with, it's quite well-funded. And so I think that at the work session, Councilmember French had suggested using that to address the tower here in Crawl Park. And then, I guess, use the grant monies to do the million dollar tower. Councilmember French.
I think what I, and I may be wrong because it was a while ago, but I think what I recommended was that there's sufficient money in the water fund. And if you couple that with the required rate increase that's gonna have to happen in order for us to be eligible to receive the grant to build the second water tower, that there would be sufficient funds, and that the percentage of match that we would pay gets smaller the more we ask for. So maybe it's 20% for a half a million tank, or for 2 million to request, and maybe it's 15% for 3 million, maybe it's 10% for 3.5 million. I don't know what the numbers are, there's, Mayor Brown saw the algebra equation, but I doubt he can recall it from memory. But I think that there is sufficient funds to repair the existing water tank, but that does not make us compliant. So we still have to build something. And so I think there's even more money in our water fund now, in the fund balance of the water fund, to not only pay for the repair of the existing water tank, but to make a dent in any max that we would have to come up with to build a new one.
Councilmember Barnes.
So we have different funding for our water in our budget. We got the wastewater treatment, and we got our sewer. So you're saying we'll take some money from those entities, and also we're gonna raise the water prices to the citizens? Will we do that directly from the city council by ordinance? Or will we gonna send that to a vote, to the public? There's some things that we should consider before we just make these statements to the public, and they not have a full understanding of what we're gonna do and where the money's gonna come from and how it's gonna affect them.
So my conversation with Mickey Bitner was that, and he had actually at that work session at a table, that they had, you know, basically gonna show where we were relative to other communities' water rates. And we were kind of basically, you know, right in the middle. And I think as the water rate increase is, would be a requirement to receive the grant, and that's a federal thing, but that would be tied to the median income in town. Because what, basically what was explained is that the median income, what the rates are now are below what they ideally should be. Because what Mickey Bitner was saying is that usually with a, with a community, you wanna have enough money to run the enterprise fund of water, but then you also want to be able to set aside money to deal with replacements and upgrades. And so even one of the things I just mentioned while the discussion, I just remembered while the discussion was going on, was that if we went with, I guess, the smaller towers, over time you'd have higher repair costs. I remember him saying that. And so with, going with a larger tower with, I guess, the concrete base would reduce the need for kind of, you know, the painting that has to go on in the, you know, on the exterior and interior of the tank. So there would be a rate decrease because that's, that would, that would be part of the federal requirement to receive the grants. And that's something that, but again, that's something we would have to probably do. Because if we put it to a vote and the people, and the people in the city said no, then we don't, we don't get the grant. And that's a whole bunch of election stuff and timing issues. So I think that the council would need to get the opinion of residents and then come back and make a decision. So, but no matter what, we have to do something because we're below the amount of water we're supposed to have. Councilmember Barnes.
I understand we have to do something. I just want the public to be informed. Right now, I would ask that this council send out a timeline to the public, and the city managers should have a timeline when we apply for the grant. Now that you've stated that you feel it's best that the council sign it without election, through a vote, that we're gonna raise their rates. And we let them know how much money is in our sewer and our water fund, and what we're gonna take out, how it's gonna affect them, and what we're doing. I would really like a Excel spreadsheet for the public when they come into the open public meeting so they can fully understand what we're doing and how it's gonna deal with them. Because from what I'm hearing now, we shall not go to an election by authority of the charter. We can write that right into their water bills, but I want them to know exactly what we're doing. Because right now, it sounds a little ambiguous to me. But I understand we must fix that tower, but I want the public to know totally that their bills are gonna go up. Because of some of the elections that we've had, we're still strapping the 60% of the senior citizens who really pay for all of these rate hikes. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there some, like the spreadsheet, I think is a good idea, and then maybe we could put it on the city's website for people to access so they can kind of see. I'm also wondering if there's some way we could send information out with the water bill.
Mayor, we're on the same page. I've already had conversations with Mickey Bitner in regards to starting a series of educational pieces, both through direct contact through community forums, as well as mailouts and on our website and every other means of communication that we have, so that people can be as informed as they can be in advance of a final determination, which I don't anticipate being before the end of this year.
Thank you.
There any other questions or comments from council on this issue? Thank you. Seeing that, we'll move on to item D, discussion, I guess, approval for funding the Ash Street parking lot. Is there, well, we'll start, I guess we'll start with discussion. Can you bring us up to speed?
Mayor and council, I don't know if you recall, but I think it was earlier this year, there was an application to the USDA for the renovation of the parking lot off of Ash Street. And we submitted the application for the project, which was a... of Ash Street. And we submitted the application for the project, which was approximately a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The good news is, we did get a confirmation from USDA for a grant. However, the grant funding amount is approximately half. I don't see it in my summary.
Fifty-nine oh fifty.
Okay. Yes, thank you. So, fifty-nine thousand and fifty dollars. So, that leaves us essentially with three options. One is to accept the grant, and then the city is responsible for the balance, which is fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty. If you recall, we had committed eighteen thousand nine hundred when we submitted the grant application, anticipating a ten percent match. The other option is to reject the grant outright. And the third option is to adjust the project to meet the initial match required of the city, which is eighteen-nine, plus the amount confirmed by the USDA for a total project of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty. I did confer with our engineer, and he had indicated there isn't a whole lot of room for reducing the project. One possibility is taking out about fifteen thousand for some of the curb and gutter, which I would think we would want to keep in the project. So, we were trying to have some innovative approaches to trying to fill the funding gap, which is approximately forty thousand if you anticipate that the city was already committed to the eighteen plus change. I did bring this to the attention of the DDA, and they essentially have no funding themselves. So, there wasn't really anything in place at the present time for them to participate. Some suggestions included looking at some other organizations to share, do some cost sharing and some additional fundraising, including the possibility of a patronicity campaign to try to fill that gap. So, I need some direction from you relative to how to approach the response to the USDA, because they do want this really by Wednesday. They plan on sending out the confirmation by Friday. If we do reject the grant, then those dollars are redistributed to other applicants.
So, the question that, okay, the question that I have is if we, if the council were to say that we're just going to stay to what we, the council originally approved, and we accept the grant, what happens if the rest of the funds aren't secured? So, if the city says we're going to stick to the roughly, you know, nine, nineteen thousand dollars that we pledged?
I strongly, without having something in writing, I strongly suspect there's going to be some contribution from other organizations. I don't know what that is, because we haven't officially asked. We just found this out last week. But to answer your question-
Yes, we wouldn't be on the vote. Okay.
The city would be making the commitment with the intention of seeking alternative funding to repay us.
Okay.
That's essentially what we'll be setting up.
Councilmember French?
Thank you, Mayor. The eighteen-nine was going to be coming from our local street, our fund balance?
I believe it's in the summary. It was from two funds.
City maintenance.
Yeah.
So, the question then is, forty thousand is the difference. I know the answer to this question already. Is there, is there a way to take some of that from the same funds and the rest from our fund balance, and then do the appeal to other organizations who might profit from this work?
That's essentially what we're most likely looking at if we were to move forward.
I would, I would support that.
So, if we, I know one of the, in the DDA meeting, one of the, I guess, other op, you mentioned, one of the other options is to say, okay, we'll just try again. I mean, do we have a sense of, did we ever contact, it's not last name, but with the, the contact at USDA? Did we do that?
Yes, and you're just taking your chances. You're-
Okay.
One of the situations is what is going to be the level of federal funding, which we don't know. The fact that they had reduced it from the ninety percent match potential to a fifty percent match is also kind of indicative that they're having limited funding. And the fact that they're pressuring us relative to making a decision so that they can redistribute the funds also is kind of indicative that they're not robust in their resources.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor. If we were, and I'm almost certain we probably don't have the figures tonight, but if we were to take the maximum allowable additional from the maintenance and sewer funds, do we know how much that would be between those two funds and the difference from the general fund? Then do we know what the balance of the general fund would be, or am I, is that possible too?
I don't have those figures. Some of it would be based on what is actually eligible for use from those funds, because they have to be specific to either maintenance of the city, if it's a city maintenance line item, or the water funds. It would have to be with the water system. So, there couldn't be crossover. You couldn't do the paving with the water system funds, in other words. So, we would have to, and make it certain that we didn't exceed, going below fifteen percent fund balance for any of the enterprise funds.
So, essentially, tonight, we couldn't get a, taffing a figure on anything if we decided to do anything but reject this. Not in terms of how those fundings would be split, because I couldn't get the engineer to get that breakdown to me today. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so, my concern, I do remember voting on this, okay? And this is for improvements to a parking lot that, right now, the city owns. Initially, the city voted to spend eighteen thousand nine hundred, roughly. And the grant funding didn't come in the way we initially thought. Now, we're being asked to expend an additional forty thousand dollars on one parking lot. My concern with this is that we have sidewalks, we have so many needs throughout the city, that an additional forty thousand dollars, I just feel like when you look at priority areas in the city, I can name a few that are pretty high priority. And right now, I don't see any urgency in addressing those, those needs. So, I personally, I just don't see the city expending an additional forty thousand dollars for a parking lot, when we have no guarantee that we're going to get that money back. And, I mean, with the project downtown, we, tax revenues not coming to the city, I mean, how can we recoup this money? I just have concerns.
If I could offer just a brief response, you mentioned sidewalks in particular. And again, that's a situation where it's driven by the funding source for the sidewalks. So, that wouldn't impact sidewalks in particular, wouldn't impact streets in particular. But what started this conversation is there are upgrades to the infrastructure, especially below the parking lot, as well as the parking lot slope itself, that are going to have to be addressed no matter what. So, as part of that conversation, I asked Mickey to find out if there were some funding sources available that could help in offsetting some of those costs. So, a significant portion of this project is related to making those infrastructure upgrades, which is why the water system is one of the sources for the match. So, even if we don't, if we, if you've said we're not going to do the grant at all, we still have an obligation to fix some of this infrastructure there at that site.
Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just for clarification, the idea to reduce the cost of the project to seventy-seven thousand, so the city could remain at the eighteen-nine, was not considered to be a good idea, because what, it was looking to cut what?
The curb and the gutter, that portion of the project. There was some curbing involved.
Okay.
So, Mickey's recommendation is if you're redoing the parking lot and then leaving the curb unaddressed, you can make that choice, but it wasn't his recommendation. I have another question, but I'll come back.
Here's Councilmember Spicer, then we'll come back to-
Thank you, Mayor.
Read.
I understand that at, this is probably a prime opportunity to seize the moment, to take advantage of the construction that's going on, to fix the infrastructure in this parking lot. However, not considering the maintenance and the sewer fund, if we were to take the monies from our general fund, would that drastically reduce our general fund, or? No. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Reed and Malak.
Sitting next to a very intelligent person.
Must be on the other side.
That since you're going to have the brewery there and you're going to have a body placed there, if you fix the parking lot, you could have parking meters that would return you funds, that might pay for some of the other costs that-
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Spicer, can you explain a little bit more what you just stated? Because I wasn't clear on it.
I basically was just saying, there were, we had some discussions with regard to taking some of the monies to fill, to reach this balance from the city maintenance and sewer fund. However, Dr. Mitchell had indicated that we, there had to be certain, there's certain restrictions and requirements with taking monies from those funds. So, I said, okay, what I was trying to get to was just forget taking monies from those funds. Even if we can take ten dollars, and let's not even consider that, what if we took the balance that is needed to complete the parking lot from the general fund balance? Would that drastically affect our balance? And I was just told that it would not.
The other, oh, Councilmember French, oh wait.
Would it be broke, or it wouldn't be close to going broke?
So, Councilmember French, then Brown, then I'll have a count.
So, the, the general fund balance is in excess of nine hundred thousand, maybe over a million at this point. So, forty thousand dollars is not an awful lot to take off the fund balance. Now, we can nickel and dime that every year. We're going to be taking a little bit out of fund balance to pay for the Albi Marshall Connector. We're going to take a little bit out of fund balance to pay this or that. Remember that, that again, this is an opportunity, like all the other reasons that we spend out of our fund balance. They are single-point opportunities for the betterment of the city, which is why the fund balance is there. It covers emergencies, it covers opportunities. And so, I think that Councilwoman Spicer brings an excellent point, that no doubt, the fund balance pays for bills that occur, and then those funds are returned once money comes back from us, whether it be a grant that pays after we incur those expenses, or what have you. So, I think that we could do the same thing with the fund balance to cover this difference, then appeal to those various organizations that we would appeal to. They would then reimburse the fund balance to allow us to move forward. So, the question I think you have to ask yourself is simply, given the opportunities that we are presented with at this time in our city's history, with the rebuilding of the downtown, with the development of that block, on that side of that block, do we as a city make some investments in the capital structure, like sewer and drainage, to maximize the potential of those properties in the downtown district that we are working to develop, so that income by way of taxes can come our way?
Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Barnes? Councilmember Barnes?
Okay, I've heard this language, when we voted on the Marshall Connector, it would be a one-time deal. And even after we recognized their business plan was not above average, where we thought it would succeed, they're back asking for more. I have no problem giving forty thousand dollars, because this is going to support a business that we stated we wanted to see downtown and that we wanted to help be successful. However, we worked hard to give it up, that fund balance. We're, it might be thirty-three percent right now, or twenty, yeah, because we, when I started, we were at fifteen, and the auditors stated they wanted us to stay around seventeen. I'm correct. We have some of that money to use. However, the prior council felt it not necessary to invest into the actual physical employees of the city. That I still state that we have union negotiations coming up, that we, we pay them out of our general fund. We have some insurance packages that are coming up. We don't know how, what percentage they're going to be asking for raising, the financial part to their paychecks, or what other proportions or percentages they're going to want for the healthcare. And I'm still asking that they receive raises, and that we still need eight employees, two at the cemetery, two at wastewater, two at sewer, and two city streets. I said all that to say, if we're going to start using money out of the general fund, I would hope that we would use some toward our employees. I have no problem signing off on the forty thousand, because we made an obligation to those young men who came here, and this was an unforeseen situation. But I still think that our employees should be considered when we talk about that general fund.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like council to be aware of the possible precedent that's being set here. When businesses come in and want to open up, and they need things done, and parking lots and stuff that we own, we're setting ourselves up to have to make those repairs for them as well. So, I just want council to be aware of that.
So, when the, when the vote originally came around, I think, I believe I voted no. And my, the thinking at the time was that, how do you say it? I think, I think the argument that I heard was that the concern was with the, I don't know, the incline of the parking lot, that would damage the foundation of the building. But the concern that I had was just the, the, I think that someone made the, used the word emergency at, within the discussion so far. And I think that, you know, there are, there are emergencies and there are other things that are basically, you know, timing issues that are not necessarily emergencies. But the concern that I have is that, probably as long as we, I've been on the council, we've probably, every year, we've probably gone into the fund balance to balance-
And our fund balance has continued to grow.
Yeah. But I, but I think that the thing for me, my concern is I want to make sure that we're, you know, on the kind of conservative side of that, because you can have unforeseen issues. And I think that, you know, I think that what, I guess in recent memory, we've gone to the fund balance a lot for just, you know, you know, twenty here, fifteen here, forty here, you know, all that, those kinds of things. So, I think that I would have much rather have seen some kind of, because I remember when it was discussed before too, there was discussion about potentially purchasing it. And I can't remember where that, obviously it didn't lead anywhere, because we're not discussing it, but, or some kind of, or actually, this would be ideally, the ideal situation for an assessment district, right, of some kind, because it's a public improvement and it's, it's adjacent to kind of private property. But I, I'm nervous about going to fund balance for this. fund balance for this.
If I could offer one comment?
Yes.
Um, if you recall, recently we went through the capital improvement plan. And essentially what that was doing is laying out for the next six years, those types of infrastructure improvements we want to make and the types of major investment in equipment that we want to do in the coming years because we all recognize that we've kicked this can down the road long enough and we really do need to pay attention to a number of these matters. What step we haven't taken yet is actually designating a portion of the fund balance for both the general fund and some of the other funds that will be dedicated towards capital improvement. And that will be the next step and I was planning to incorporate that as part of our budget process going to next year. So, what's not stated, although we have a, um, a healthy fund balance, is the understanding that some portion of that will need to go towards capital improvements. It just has not been officially designated.
The, oh, just, okay, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, a question came up about, um, how much of the parking lot are we doing? Just the part behind the brewery or is it?
That is the park.
The whole behind Peabody and the old thing or just?
Not behind Peabody.
The parking lot is only behind the brewery and the, uh, photography studio and I don't know, is the, um, cremation service still there?
So just this one.
I can look at the map. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm, I'm remembering during our initial discussion and vote on this, there was some talk about possibly, selling or leasing that. Did we talk about that?
Yeah, that was discussed.
Selling or leasing that, that parking lot once it was completed?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I remember that now. Thank you.
Um, and, and they need to know by when again?
I received the email and she was asking today and I told her I would let her know tomorrow. We're meeting today.
Have we, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, do we have an estimated time of how, um, much longer before the brewery is in action?
In operation.
How much longer, what? January?
And I, I think, I think one of the, one of the thing that, um, so, I'll just be very frank. One, one of the things that when I, I'm in public and I talk to residents, and you know, I don't want to be around the bush, but like what, what the concern is, is that I support redevelopment downtown. You know, the, the, you, you, we wouldn't want something, for example, what was probably the fate of the Bone Theater until residents stepped up and, and worked on that. That would have been a, an eyesore and then a demolition issue. And so that would have probably been the fate of a lot of buildings downtown. So, we, we, I think the council has to kind of balance two things. We have to balance the fact that, there's interest in dollars and support for redeveloping downtown. But then there are also other neighborhoods and streets in the town and people, you know, are concerned about, they're concerned about demolishing, demolishing buildings we often have, right? And so, or, or streets or sidewalks. I know there's different funding mechanisms for that, but, um, I, I think we have to balance that because even, um, you know, even with the talk of the hotel, you know, I've heard comments about with all the construction and the machinery, the streets have kind of deteriorated around, you know, Porter Street and Cass Street and, and, uh, Clinton right here. And that's going to have to be addressed. So, um, huh?
The hotel is, you serve.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, that's good to know. So, but I, I think the, the concern I have is that making sure that, when the city, the city wants to, to kind of spur and support economic development, we want to make sure that, that there's a reciprocal benefit to, you know, um, the community back. I mean, but see, and I think one of the things that Councilmember Brown was talking to and alluded to is, is most of the development is happening within the DDA district. Um, so when values do go up, um, those are funds that the city does not capture. It goes to DDA. And so, um, it does, it's not like, uh, it comes back to us in a way where we can put it back into, you know, our various fun, funds. So, um, you know, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, not every time something falls through that we don't, uh, have to run to fund balance. Councilmember Barnes.
This is a specific request where we made an obligation to these young men in the business district, knowing what we've been dealing with at the time. In any project management, there's going to be a contingency plan and a buffer plan. Right now it looks like they need that buffer part so they can't complete this. Now that this is coming back, that it was more, that needed to be done in that situation, we should keep our obligation to them. In all of the cities around the nation that have redeveloped itself, it started in a downtown area. That, that's just the golden rule. Ann Arbor and Grand Rapids started with different entities doing things downtown, redeveloping the downtown and attracted other businesses and industries and people to come in. I feel, um, this is a situation that's unique and each and every time a business comes to us, it would be unique and we make a decision at that time based on the best available information we had. We had the best available im- im- uh, information from these people and we committed. I've heard council people say, hey, forty thousand dollars isn't that, that much from our general fund. City manager concurred. We did it for the connector and that was a unique situation where we chose to do that for them. With these young men, we committed ourselves to do that for them. And I think that we should continue to try to develop that downtown situation. Even though I have situations in precinct one, we made a vote to support these young men on our own property that's adjacent to them to help them build their business. And we should continue that.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just, um, wanted to be clear. The council's, um, commitment was eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars. We had no way of knowing that the grant funding was only going to come in at fifty percent. So, um, I, I mean, I support development downtown and, and I support, um, the business, the business, the business opportunities. I just, um, you know, it's a little shock, shocking that, that the grant, um, did not cover what we initially thought. And, um, what we initially committed to is now forty thousand dollars more than, than what we, we thought. It's, it's a little, little shocking, a little disappointing. Um, but I do, uh, I mean, I understand how we got here in the position that we're in.
Councilmember French.
Or, if it please the council, I'd like to call the question.
Oh, just for you, this, can you withdraw that for one moment?
Sure, I'll withdraw that.
Okay.
John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building and Code. Uh, as far as the parking lot there, right, and whether you, whichever way you vote, I think we're overlooking one of the other aspects of that area. You have the full four hundred block of self superior. There's more than just the micro brewery and there's more than just the Peabody Place on that block. As that block develops and if it develops in a manner that everybody wants it to, uh, it means there'll be more apartments in between, uh, the Brewery Two and Peabody Place. Which means you have to have parking spots for those individuals who are living downtown. Whether it's by permit on a city lot or on private. Unfortunately, in the four hundred block and also in the three hundred block and such on the west side of Superior Street, we have very little public parking other than on a street. Uh, this particular parking lot is actually the only parking lot that's public between, uh, three hundred and four hundred blocks. So, everything else is either private or you have to park on a street. So, just want to make sure everybody remembers that it's more than just a couple structures that are in that block.
Well, there was no, there was, there was discussion, but I mean, was there? There, there was no motion initially, so you can't. So you can make a motion, but.
You see what I'm saying? I thought we, I thought at the very beginning it was discussion approval, so the discussion began after the motion was made.
There was, there was no motion, there was no motion.
And I moved that we approve the funding for the Ash Street Parking Lot. With the additional forty thousand dollars coming as the city manager would, would make decisions as her capacity to.
Support. There's been a, a motion and a second, I guess. This discussion, um, we kind of had discussion about it, but, um, I, I just, I'm concerned, I can, I'm concerned about, I guess, I guess keep going back into fund balance because I think we, we, there was the situation with even, um, Superior, and I know the water mains seem to be even larger than that, but that's something that came back. There was another, is it forty or sixty? It was something like that when we had to, to go back and do the, the water mains. Um, I, I, I.
Just call the roll call.
Yeah. Are there any, okay. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there, I think I heard the city manager say, and I just want to ask, are there potential, um, opportunities, for us to receive some of this back?
There is the potential and we will be pursuing those.
Okay. Okay.
Cause, cause one of the things, you know, like with, uh, with the connector, for example, the city was on the hook for, was it thirty-five thousand, I believe? That would have had to come out of general fund. Huh?
This last time?
Yeah, this time. Okay, thirty. Um, and we were fortunate enough to have, you know, uh, I guess additional, um, entities, organizations that were interested in preserving that service. And so they kind of made those contributions. So now the city is roughly probably maybe on, on, uh, the hook for maybe fifteen thousand dollars. Um, but at least there was some kind of, um, additional. Cause right now as it stands, this would be just basically the USDA grant in the city. Okay. So, um, yeah. Councilmember French.
So I, I just have a question about procedure. What I'm hearing our mayor say is he's sort of lobbying to not approve this rather than just calling the roll call vote to vote.
What's discussion?
I understand that, but, but it, it's not discussion if you're doing most of the speaking. It's you expressing your opinion about how you plan to vote. And I'm, I'm fine with that. But, um, I would ask that we, that I call the question. We've, we've discussed this now for thirty-five minutes.
Okay. So just, so, whoa. Okay.
Just vote. You can vote now.
Okay. Uh, we'll go to, uh, a vote here. Um, if there's no other discussion, it's a roll call vote on approving the forty thousand dollars from, I don't know which funds.
Mayor?
Okay.
Isn't this a vote to call the question?
Oh, okay. Okay. So, so, yes, we'll, we'll take that vote.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Okay. So this was the vote for the approval of the forty thou, I guess of the additional forty thousand dollars for the project. And what happened?
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
No. Uh, okay. City manager report.
Thank you. Mayor and council, um, provide, provide you with an update. Um, the M.DOT project is still proceeding and as you can see, the Cass Street connection um, is calling for the Cass Street to be closed for another two weeks as anticipated. In meeting with the M.DOT representative last week, they are still on track for the section that is south of Cass Street to be open around Labor Day. So it should be open in time for the Festival of the Forks. And they are still having the bi-weekly, um, open house sessions for anyone who wants to speak with the M.DOT representative. The next one being this Wednesday at nine AM at, on the second floor of the Levington Center. And if you recall, each year we have the annual employee picnic. And this year we are planning on having that on Friday, August eighteenth. And I wanted to ask for your approval to allow for us to have the afternoon, usually as two hours or more. And, uh, we were looking at from two o'clock to five o'clock so that, um, all the employees don't have to worry about coming back to work and they can invite their family as well to participate.
Okay. Does that require a motion or do we just verbally?
We probably can do the next future agenda item.
Make it a future agenda item. Okay.
Okay, okay.
Tomorrow will be the Community Forum with Public Safety. It's entitled Driving While Black, Policing While White. Uh, that will be held at six PM at Bethel Baptist Church located at five two three Washington Street. Councilmembers Brown and Barnes were very much instrumental in, um, initiating this engagement of conversation between our public safety officers and the community. So we're looking forward to a good turnout. Everyone is welcome to participate. The County Land Bank and Treasurer has, have begun the demolition of the Dowrymple School. So that has already started. And I believe they have committed to having that down in a, in less than one month. The Health Department has hired a new health officer, Eric Pessell. And he was the, um, environmental health director and health, environmental health director in both, um, Berry Eaton and Jackson Counties. So he comes with a wealth of experience and I have invited him to come to a future council meeting to introduce himself in any of the initiatives, um, that he is, um, looking forward to implementing while he's in that role. The Resilient Communities Project had a wonderful picnic this past Saturday for anyone who was able to attend. Um, they had a very good turnout. The Al, Bill Albion Fellows had the three-on-three basketball tournament, which was a lot of fun. So, Holland Park had a lot of people there enjoying all of the amenities, um, that are on that site. And we thank the Star Commonwealth for, um, putting together that picnic for us to celebrate. Festival of the Forks is scheduled for September fourteenth through the seventeenth. And those plans currently include using a portion of Rieger Park and Erie Street, um, as part of those festivities. So those details are being finalized. But I just wanted to make sure you knew what those dates were. The Planning Commission meeting for July, thus tomorrow evening, has been canceled. And as, um, Councilmember Barnes has mentioned, labor negotiations are about to get underway. So we're looking forward to sitting down with our, um, represented employees. The community cleanup, um, this is very important and I really do encourage all of the council members to reach out to the residents in your precinct and citywide, to have them involved in the cleanup efforts. This includes, um, dropping off the tires, electronics and those bulk items. And using this as an opportunity to help your neighbors and others in your this as an opportunity to help your neighbors and others in your, your neighborhood or block, um, who might need assistance in getting some of their yards and property cleaned up as well. And the drop-off sites are Ketchum Field, which is North Street and North Clark Street, and the other is Harris Field, the corner of, um, Cass Street and Gail Street. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Future agenda items. We, uh, clerk, clerk Dominguez always has already informed me that, that the, uh, that request is going to be on, on the, uh, the agenda. Are there any other future agenda items? Councilman Barnes?
EDC parking lot at Austin and Albion.
What is it?
EDC parking lot at Austin and Albion in the six hundred block, right there at the stoplight. Sigma five. Yeah, they own that parking lot. EDC owns that parking lot.
Could I just ask for clarification on what in particular?
What they go with.
So the plans for that property?
Yes.
Are there any other future agenda items for next meeting? Councilman Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like, um, I noticed in the city's, um, City Valiant Newsletter, there was indicated a sign near Rieger Park that said water is not safe to, do not enter, whatever. I'd just like an update. What is it? What's the matter with?
Are you talking, are you talking about the, the water, the water?
Pool that.
The weight pool?
That used to be.
It's the teakin' well that is right there by the playground, toward the boundary of Rieger Park.
Did you just report on that?
Victory Park.
Okay.
So we get involved with the matter with.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other future agenda items? Okay. Oh, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I, okay, I, our, our city manager's evaluation time is approaching.
Yeah, yes.
So, do we schedule something, do we schedule something?
I think, I think we need to do, and probably do that fairly quickly, is have a work session just on the evaluation, uh, the, the, the actual evaluation forms and procedure, because I think that was part of what was negotiated in the contract, and so we need to, we need to do that before we do the evaluation, right? So, um, so, so basically, we, there's, there are a series of forms that we've used since I've been on council, um, and as part of the, the negotiation, um, for the most recent manager contract, I guess, a revision or a look at that was requested. So, we need to do that before we do the evaluation.
Thank you. So, we need to schedule something to take a look at that, is what I'm, what I'm hearing?
Yeah, so.
Is there something we can do tonight or can we do that at our next meeting?
No, that needs to be a work session. I'd be fine with twenty-four. Yeah. Was, is that something that the, cause that's, that's not a council meeting.
Which date?
The twenty-fourth. That's a Monday. It's basically a week from today.
Oh, yeah, cause we have no more meetings as well. Okay. So, somebody will.
Aren't you responsible for doing, overseeing evaluations or do you do that?
Well, this is just gonna, um, give us a chance to discuss.
Right, but do you want us to find examples of evaluations? Are you gonna do that?
I think what we can do, uh, if, I mean, if you're, I'm open to suggestions, but we just, this is just going to be have a, a just open discussion about what form we can take, and then we can go from there. Um, cause it, probably for, for some time we've needed to update that, and we, that's just always in the back burner, so. So, I'm, I'm not hearing any objections to a meeting at seven, seven PM on the twenty-fourth of July, a work session just to go over evaluation process. And speaking of evaluations, the city attorney's evaluation should have been your packet, so if you could get to, get those to me as soon as possible. Two council members have so far turned them in, so that's great. Um, so if, if actually, if everyone could have them, yeah, if everybody could have them by the twenty-fourth, that'd be great, cause that's next week, a week from today. So, and if you need another copy, we can get you one, so. So, so basically, a work session next Monday, the twenty-fourth, seven PM, um, to, to discuss the evaluation, and then also just the deadline for the, um, city attorney evaluations.
Mayor, can we, can we get a confirmation email?
Yeah, that's fine.
Regarding the date on the twenty-fourth?
Okay. Councilman Barnes? Yep.
I'll be late. I got a lot into presentation at Victory Park at six-thirty, so I won't be here, but I'll be there.
Okay. Okay, um, yes.
Did you want that air in the open session or?
Oh, it's, it's, it's open session, no matter what. It's, uh, we, I mean, we can, we can.
The air conditioning's better here.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't have to be televised.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, are there any other future agenda items? Okay. Uh, we will move, everyone's here. Uh, public citizen, public, through me, public comments. Persons who are resident city council shall limit their comments to no more than, uh, three minutes, and we ask for proper decorum. Are there any just general citizen comments this evening? Oh, and please, please, oh, go ahead. Yeah, just, uh, name an address.
Albertine Showers, um, eight oh five, the Hall of Drive. Uh, I'm listening here and, um, last time I was here, I was talking about, uh, reevaluating the marijuana store or whatever it is. Now we got a beer place. You want to do their parking lot for them. Uh, then you want us to pay our, our water bill to go up, but then you don't want to fix the streets. I got a problem with that. If you could spend forty thousand dollars or fifty-eight or whatever you're gonna spend, what's wrong with these streets? I see the streets down here on this side of town is good. They're gonna get good. I live on the other side of town. When y'all gonna do that? Or what y'all gonna do about that? I got a problem. I pay taxes, I do for the city, and only down here? You, you need to start focusing a little bit further beyond here. That's a big problem. I don't want to stir the pot up, but I'll stir the pot up out there. If something ain't done over there, I got a problem.
Thank you. Are there any further, uh, public comments this evening?
Alfreda Dystart Drake, ten sixteen South Superior Street. I guess my only comment, and I know that you all have voted, I recall, one meeting I was at and Mrs., uh, Mrs. Reed mentioned about with the brewery and the children and the library, and I can't recall how that all went. My only concern is I have, um, there was an eight-year-old, a twenty-year-old, and a twenty-two-year-old. They were my cousins, and they were killed by a drunk driver. And then a couple of years later, the same driver, drinking and driving, killed some more people. And so the first time, he didn't even go to jail at all. The second time, they eventually put him in jail. And my concern is, and I'm fifty-nine years old, I've never drunk alcohol in my life. Okay, so I don't know how it all works, and when you go into bars and things, I'm not sure how that all works, and if people keep eye on how many, how much people are drinking and what have you, but that's gonna be my main concern, is that when we get a brewery down here, and I have no problem with businesses coming into town, that would not have been my choice, but that's my personal opinion, and I am entitled to that. Um, but my thoughts, I guess, public safety, are we gonna be where we, some kind of, we keep an eye on those kind of things, because people leaving a place and drinking too much and what they may do to someone else who's not even in the brewery or who doesn't drink or what have you, and those are my concerns, because those are three lives in my family that were taken by someone who was careless in what they did and didn't know when to stop drinking, and then two years later, they killed some more people. So that's my concern, is that public safety's gonna have to be on their job, who's ever working in the brewery. I mean, I don't know how all that goes. As I said, I've never drunk in my life, but that's my concern. Um, outside of that, that, you know, lives can be possibly endangered if things have not, you know, I, I is not keeping what's going on there inside, but again, I, um, you know, I've watched some of these things, I've heard all the discussion and whatever, but we gotta think about everybody. Everybody might have a, wanna go drink a beer and do whatever, you know, everyone doesn't drink, you know, and then again, like I said, the other lives on the other side, how they may be affected if someone's not drinking responsibly in a place like that. So, thank you.
Uh, are there any other public comment this evening or the comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I want, there's two things that I should have mentioned earlier, um, that the discussion has kind of brought to my attention. So, board openings. Um, and the city clerk can correct me if I'm, if I'm missing anything, but right now there's an opening, there's two openings on planning commission. There's an opening on the EDC. There is a alternate opening on the zoning board of appeals, uh, and then there's an alternate opening or, or, or an opening for an alternate, uh, for the board of review. I believe that's everything.
There's actually one EDC seat is up, then there's an open seat.
Oh.
So there'd actually be two.
It's like a two, right?
Yeah, cause there's actually been an open seat on that.
Okay, okay. So, and then, so the, the procedure for that is if you're interested, uh, you can come to city hall, pick up, uh, the, the application form for that. It's on the website as well, um, and submit those, and, uh, that's, that's very important because a lot of work gets done on the, um, the various city boards. And then the second thing I want to put out there is there are, I believe, ten students who are working, or, or young people who are going to France, I think that's the number, um, residents, and they're fundraising. I believe the trip, um, is about four hundred dollars per piece. I mean, they may receive some other funding. Uh, I think they're responsible for, um, the, the passports and, and spending money, uh, but I know that they're doing a series of fundraisers around town. Uh, there was one at the, the farmer's market a couple of weekends ago. I think it's gonna be one, uh, in front of, or Michigan ad in front of, um, the Bed and Breakfast owned by Mary Slater. And then there's gonna be one at the Police Swing at the Shell when Michael Trotter, uh, and his wife perform, um, that evening. So, please be aware of that. I think the contact I was given for fundraising is, is Felicia Coats. So you can reach out to her, but I think they're, you know, they're in a, um, you know, the crunch time now, because I think they go in September. So, um, those are, those are the two things that I want to make sure I mention this evening, so. Okay, seeing no other public comment, we will, oh.
Motion to adjourn?
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. If all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.